Okay, it is now five P M on August the twenty eighth to twenty five, and this is our city council workshop. Meetings are available to watch on our YouTube channel. Search for the City of Bruce Fletti and click the subscribe button. Please mute your phones and computers to avoid any interference during the meeting. So that goes for me too, so let me get that turned off, all right. And got that going, okay. Roll call, we got in the back, back there, we got Jamie Rodriguez as our water clerk. And we got Pam Combs, our city secretary. We have Chief Dorsey. And we have Gene Sprout, Sprout, our water maintenance supervisor. I guess he's just everything, anything to do with maintenance outside, that's Gene, okay? And up here to my left, I have got Councilman Wiggins and Councilman McGurk. And Kent Manton, our city administrator. And to my right, I have Councilman Joyce McLaughlin and Councilman Richard Prater and Councilman Richardson. Okay, I think that's everybody right now in the workshop. Okay. Citizens' presentation, the city council welcomes public comments at this point on items not specifically listed on the agenda. Speakers must sign up before the meeting begins, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The council cannot respond to matters not listed on the agenda until a future meeting. Number three, the solid waste collection contract. Council to discuss and consider potential modifications to the solid waste collection contract with Waste Connection Incorporated. Discuss any desired next steps for the provision of solid waste services. Okay, y'all wanna discuss this, Kent, you got something you wanna?
Just a couple things, yes mayor, thank you, council. Just wanted to update you on our timeline, in April of this year, council did institute a ninety day monitoring and evaluation period for our current vendor. That has passed, we have not had any significant issues. There was a little hiccup with commercial delivery service. Once we let the vendor know about that, they hopped on it immediately and got that corrected, so I would consider that insignificant. So just to review where we are, council gave us a little bit of direction on the next steps they'd like to see. That did not include the RFP, that included some renegotiation with our current vendor on the contract terms. And so mayor Proten has worked on some of those changes, and you should have the proposed language there in front of you. So just what we need from you tonight is for council to discuss this, provide any direction to staff on what those next steps are gonna be. Review these proposed updates to the agreement, let us know if you are okay with that, if you'd like to see additional changes. And then also just discuss if you'd like to hear from alternate vendors throughout this process too. I know we've got at least one who's interested in coming and getting before you. So my recommendation this one is just make sure that we get this agreement to our city attorney before we officially sign off on anything and go approaching those vendors. Thank you.
Anybody wanna talk about anything, Mr. Wiggins? Sorry, Mr. Richardson, didn't see your hand.
When, when did we get this? This new one?
The new packet?
This, because the one that I had in my packet was June two thousand and six.
Okay, so the.
Yeah, the old one, I didn't have this new one in my packet.
It was not a part of the packet, it came in on Monday, so I sent that out via email.
Sent it out via email on Monday?
I think it was Monday or Tuesday, around when you sent that out.
Something like that.
I didn't get it, oh, well, what changed, what's the difference between this and the other? Man, I hadn't had time to look at it. Between this and the other, what changed?
Okay, let me, let me kinda dive into that, okay? One of our concerns, one of, one of our concerns has been complaints, albeit the complaints have, have reduced. But our concern was that we had complaints for non-service. I got a printout from Janie, thank you Janie, I appreciate that, of exactly what those complaints are. And the result of investigations and stuff like that. And I found that a lot of the complaints are the customer's fault. But as we looked at the contract, there really was no meat for the city as far as what, if, if they don't comply. The only option we had was to terminate the agreement, okay? And we really needed a progressive discipline kind of response to their contract. So, and actually, the term on the agreement, it had an automatic rollover agreement. So every five years, if we didn't say anything, it just rolled over to a new contract. And so for, since Ju- June of two thousand and seven, we've had, and that, I made some modifications, connections, okay? And so if you look on page seven, the terms of agreement, I modified that to, instead of being a five, five-year automatic rollover, it's a three-year term. At the end of the three-year term, they have to come bef- the, the contract has to come before city council. And that gives us an opportunity then to, to say, look, we're not gonna renew it, or we'll renew it for a one year, and this is the reason why we're gonna do that. We have options at that point, if we're not satisfied with the performance, to be able to say, okay, they're gonna do this for three years. They need to fix whatever is broken and bring it back to city council, and we'll determine what the renewal rate is. Okay, at which time, we can actually draft another contract modifying those terms, okay, to whatever the council decides. Additionally, there were no penalties in here. So as they continued to fail to perform, we needed to have some meat in this. So what I did was, if you'll look on page twelve of thirteen, it says the failure to perform terminations, okay? And I put language in there that says, that gives them increments. It gives them a four-month increment, and if they have so many violations that are not substantiated, in other words, a person says, well, they never picked up my trash. Well, you didn't put your trash out till noon and they came by at seven. Okay, their contract says their service is, is available seven to seven, seven A M to seven P M. So that's the, that's the customer, not the contractor. Or it's beyond the contractor's capability in that we have, like torrential rains, let's say. Flooded streets, whatever the case may be, and they can't perform, well, this provides an exception for that. We won't count those as part of the failure to perform. But if they fail to perform, and it's the company's fault, their truck breaks down, driver didn't show up. You got a new driver and he just didn't know what he was supposed to do, okay? It allows them so many of those kinds of violations before we institute penalties. And so the first viol- period is four months, and in a four-month period, if you have so many violations, then we'll give you a notice of failure to perform. So you're on notice that you're starting to build up into the next category. The second category is an eight-month period, and it too has, or, or eight, eight complaints in a sixty-day period, I'm sorry. And the first one is four complaints in, in a sixty-day period, that needs to be fixed. But in that category there, then we're gonna charge them ten percent of what we would normally pay in a fee to the company. So now you're getting, you're hitting them in a pocketbook, they need to wake up, okay? And the third is if they have twelve violations, then, then in a hundred and twenty days, then it's grounds for termination. You, you're not performing, you have twelve violations, and it's cumulative, it's not, it's not, well, in the four, in the third period, you had a hundred and twenty violations. It's gonna be cumulative, so four, eight, twelve, there you go, you're gone.
But it's third violation, it's not what the citizens say happened.
Right, it's, once they're concluded and we said, no, this is on you, you didn't do what you were supposed to do, that then gives us some recourse. It doesn't say that we, it's mandatory, the contract's void, but it does come back to us to say, we have this option, we told you we have this option, and this is what we're gonna do. We certainly could take and look at this and say, okay, you got all these and it's available for us to terminate you, but we can put you on for a probationary period. That's an election of the city council, okay? But this has much more meat and protects the city more than it does waste connections. So that's an explanation of what I've done with this contract.
Mr. Richardson, you had a question?
Yes, I got a couple questions now. So, Mr. McGurk, I'm looking through this and talking about a hearing, that hearing, is that hearing?
I'll turn your mic on, sir. There you go.
I was just making a joke earlier about us forgetting to arm, on our mics, sorry about that. So this talks about the hearing for these violations, is that hearing before the city council, am I reading that?
That is correct.
Okay, cool. And I guess my, my only other question was, what sort of timeframe do we have, like if, one of the things that Kent mentioned was possibly looking at another provider? What type of timeframe are we looking in to make this decision?
So you've got several months to play with, our renewal term ends, let's see here, that's May thirty first of two thousand and twenty-six. I think we need to give ninety days or sixty days notice of our intent to seek another.
Vendor?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Anybody else have any comments or questions that they'd like to ask us?
I kinda think this, I'd like to look at it some more, like I said, I didn't know if I got no email.
I always check the city emails on a daily basis. But anyway, I hadn't even seen this, it looks like it's a lot of stuff here, so. And some of it, by this quick looking at it, some of it in there, the old agreement hidden there, a lot is added, so, I don't know. I can't make no decision one way or the other right now without looking at it.
That's, we're just gonna be looking at it.
Yeah, I'd assume.
It's not on, basically on the agenda.
Yeah.
No, no, it's open for discussion.
Just something that, Mr. McGurk, he fixed it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Initiative to do a, try to get a contract done that would help the city, and so he wants y'all to look it over and see what y'all think. If y'all have some questions or something that y'all want to change, you might write it down or highlight it or write above it and then get together. Uh, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I just, I agree with Mr. Wiggins, give him a chance to look over, but I mean, in general, I mean, I, it looks pretty good to me, but yeah, I'm all for us to give him a chance for everybody to look at it.
Okay, sir.
And I also was like, thank you for all the work you done.
Yes.
Thank you so much, yeah.
So council, would you like me to go ahead and put this on your September agenda for additional discussion? Or would you like this to go ahead and head over to our city attorney for review and comment markup before it comes back before you?
Well, I, I'd say send it over to our city attorney and, and then at least, at least we know that what he might know, he or she, whoever, might have some changes. And that way, when it comes back to us, we'll already know that the attorney's looked at it and this is what they said, so what do y'all think?
Sounds good.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
Sounds good. No, we're just discussing, this is just a workshop.
Cussing and discussion.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, this is just a discussion. Okay, well, let's go to number four, it's the drainage and flood mitigation effort effects. Council to discuss and consider part efforts, challenges, and solutions to mitigate flooding issues, especially those along Third Street, F M one oh seven. Receive an update from the city administrator and public works director on work performed to date as well as outstanding tasks. So Kent, you got?
Yes, okay, let's dig into this one a little bit. There's gonna be a few slides, I wanna get y'all as much information as possible, I know I've, I've got some pictures in there too, so, it should, should help guide the discussion. But yes, I know we've, we've done a lot, it's, it's been about a year or so, a lot of this information has come to you by email, but I hope this paints the picture of what we've done, what we've got left to do. And, and at least you're able to provide us with some additional direction after this. So first and foremost, just wanna talk a little bit about the history, back in two thousand and twenty-four, I know it's, it's already been a year, but we had a significant amount of rain in a very short window. And so this, this spreadsheet here from Texas A and M University paints that picture. In two thousand and twenty-four, you can see here, in, in March and April and May, we received way more than your, your average rainfall. And then the year in total is well above, almost twenty-five inches above other years. So it happened all at once. Governor Greg Abbott, he issued a severe weather disaster declaration during this period. It's estimated that this was a forty-year flood event that affected both Falls and McClintock County.
As long as we're on that side, I can't see the numbers from here.
Sure.
So long as we're on that side and I, I can't quite see from back here, how does the two thousand and twenty-four rainfall compare? We had twenty, a lot of rain around like twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, I believe?
Twenty sixteen.
I'm twenty sixteen, yeah.
Correct, yes.
How do those two numbers compare?
Very comparable, to the, to the twenty, I think it's twenty fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. Yep, you got seventy-seven inches in total for the entire year, of course, this is statewide, okay? This is not specific to our area, and two thousand and twenty-four, you're at sixty-nine inches. Same, same month, that, that month of May is where you saw the significant amount of rain there.
Gotcha.
Or May and April anyway, spring. Okay, so here's an overview of the City of Bruce Fletti. This, this is, these are the known issues that we experienced in two thousand and twenty-four. Of course, up here in the Shady Shores area, we had one home that was completely flooded, totally destroyed, it remains in that state today. This was in the active FEMA flood zone. Then down here around, it's, it's kinda hard to see some of the, the roadways, but down here around Mackey, Third Street, Fourth Street intersection, we had a total of four homes flooded. This was acute damage, as Mr. Litten had mentioned at the previous council meeting, he spent estimated twenty thousand dollars restoring his, his property. I know the mayor was also flooded in that, sorry, I don't mean to put it out there, but.
No, you're correct.
So it, it certainly hit a few houses. Here's the topographic map, in case you've never really looked at this or studied this or thought about it. This is what we determined, a lot of the water is coming from these higher level elevations, that red area, and then it's flowing in into the Eddy, downtown Eddy area and off into Falls County. So that's where we spent a lot of our focus, focused our efforts, was trying to capture and divert the water that was coming at Mackey Ranch and push that outside and away from the homes.
And if y'all need to get up and go look at the map, y'all can, 'cause this is just a, a workshop, so, yeah, you can get up there and go look at it.
And of course, it will be on YouTube after the fact, so you can go in and scream and zoom in your screen.
Exactly.
So just showing this up here, this is the Upper Deer Creek watershed, this is where all the water flows. Essentially, that area, that hill, the Eagle Ranch subdivision that's being proposed, all that water flows this way south to Huya Creek. So since the spring of two thousand and twenty-four, like I mentioned, our efforts focused on diverting those flows from Mackey Ranch and Third Street to the southern branch of Huya Creek. We've done four, or public works crews have done four bar ditch regrades, they dug out along F M one oh seven, West Third Street. We removed one failing, unnecessary culvert along Mackey Ranch Road. Two culverts were replaced, four culverts cleaned, including larger culverts between Third Street and Fourth Street. And we also, this past year, you probably noticed, placed out temporary soil water barriers to slow and detain that water flow. So here's what that work looks like on our, on our map slash plan. So we've, we've got the, the various keys over there to the right, and then that green is the work that has been completed. So this is really where we focused our efforts. If all that water is coming from this Eagle Ranch subdivision land, especially when there's no vegetation out there, which was the case in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four, that water's just rushing off the land. The vegetation, when it's active, it's slowing that water down, detaining it for a period of time and preventing that pooling effect. So our idea was to capture that water here and divert it over to Fourth Street, which runs south and then runs into that creek. Here's some work we've done along Third Street, we've also dug out this section here, and we do have some more work that we'd like to do eventually. This is our plan, continued into the downtown Eddy area, we have not done any work in this area. This is the Osborne, Washington area. We'd like to capture and push some additional water flow from F M one oh seven over to the north side of Huya Creek, which would, which would enter over by Eagle. But that area already has a few drainage issues, so we really need to, to dig out both sides of Osborne Street. However, it's pretty tight in there, and so we're gonna have to coordinate with the property owners when we do that. This is the Horseshoe Bend area, we also did a little bit of work on the north side of Horseshoe Bend. Okay, so here's some of our outstanding tasks on our plan. So we still need to continue to deepen the bar ditches along the north side of Third Street, that's, that's certainly clear. We have put in a text dot request for this, we've been informed that this will take some time to coordinate with additional departments. I don't have any updates on that since June of this year. Also, we'd like to replace the culvert at Franklin and Third Street, we've, the guys have swapped this out multiple times, tractor trailers keep compressing it back in, so we need to get a concrete over them, a, a concrete replacement. We also have asked for that from text dot. Replacement and clean-out culverts on the south side of Third Street, this isn't where the bulk of the water is rushing, but there are some improvements that need to occur over there. Channelization in the downtown Eddy area, just talked a little bit about that. Eagle Drive debris clean-out, possible installation of an oversized culvert, we worked with a property owner over there who's identified some of these issues, we've got this on our radar, we just haven't had the, the time or the manpower to, to knock it out. There's a diversion in the alleyway between. There's a diversion in the alleyway between Osborn and Washington that needs to be performed. We've got Black Rock, um, they're gonna be taking some of the spoil out when they complete that section, putting it in the alleyway to divert some of the water that was rushing across uh, property owners, um, Pier and Beam House. We've al- we've also got clean and dig out the culvert area at Fourth Street and Market Street. That's com- almost completely buried now. A lot of that is from the sewer project.
We didn't clean it out a couple of months ago.
Y'all got that one already?
Probably, maybe missing it.
Okay, I'll, I'll touch base with you on that one. And then we've got some uh, culverts that also need to be addressed over on Hungry Hill Rose, specifically two oh nine. So some of our planning efforts too, this hasn't just been us trying to get out there and, you know, just making work happen without, you know, a whole lot of foresight or knowledge, understanding the situation. Uh, myself and Chief Dorsey, we just updated the uh, McClintock County Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's in the process of being finalized right now. This is not a request for funding, but by us putting our drainage needs in that plan, we can potentially take that and secure grant funding as it comes available. A lot of the questions on those grant applications, hey, do you have a plan and pace? Are you working with your county? Are you working with neighboring entities? And now we can say that we have done that. And then secondly, as a part of that GLO RCP grant that we are currently submitted for, just waiting on award determination, we do have a master drainage study and improvement plan as a part of that. So if that's approved, then our consultant that we're working with will do a detailed inventory of the culverts within the city, our str- storm drain needs, and they will mark that up so we can consider, you know, what our priorities are and how much things might cost. So here's some of our challenges, uh, first and foremost, the slow response from text dot. You know, uh, the maintenance agreement that I, that I shared with you there, it's, it's not super clear as to who's supposed to be respant, responding to which situation. There is a new agreement that's currently under development, but essentially that, that maintenance agreement says, you can ask text dot for assistance when they have resources and time available. And so they're planning on coming out sometime in the fall and helping us with these issues. I just, I have no additional information to provide. Um, we've also had a lot of conflicting projects and priorities. And so we've had to pull the public works guys off just to keep the water up and running with this sewer project. And they haven't had the time to get over there and dedicate to, to digging up the, the bar ditches. Shallow underground utilities are also all over the right of way on FM one oh seven. So we've got gas lines, we've got fiber optics over there. And so we can't dig out those bar ditches like you think we should be able to, because we don't wanna damage those facilities, get hit with fines or put somebody out of service. And then one of the last ones, and this, this isn't one that can really be resolved. Some of those houses, if you'll notice when you're driving, they sit below grade of how that highway has been built up over the years. And so all that water pulling off of the highway, getting splashed off from cars, it's just contributing to that pooling effect that people are experiencing. And that is all my comments, and I'll certainly open it up to your questions and discussion.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Wiggins?
Did, you remember we had a, I don't know, two, couple of meetings or so, well, more than that probably, meetings ago? We had a couple of gentlemen from, lived around Third Street, came and talked about the flooding issues, you remember? Did we go out and look at their issue?
It's the one that they dug out and then they made the other one flood some more, so they had to go back and fix that, yeah.
Yes, sir, this uh, agenda item is directly in response to them. They came out in July of this, of li- of this year. It's our last regular council meeting.
So, I mean, we got that rectified?
That's a complicated question. Um, if we get another forty year rain like we did in two thousand twenty four, it may not be fully rectified. But normal, regular raining, we have not experienced any issues this, this current year.
Yes, sir.
So, if y'all noticed, the last, at that meeting, I wasn't here. But uh, they were talking about the berm in the back.
Right.
Okay, that's not city property.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be anything we could handle. Uh, now out front of that house, if y'all look, when y'all are going down one oh seven, you'll see a black uh, plastic uh, pipe coming up at an angle out of the ground. They extended that driveway and they did, when they put that in, the previous owners didn't bury that culvert. So that water has to get up high enough to get into that culvert on that side. But anything in the back is between them, we can't control the water back there.
Right. Yeah, I, I thought that was the way I understood it back then.
I thought that they said it was in the back.
Right, right. What about the, what about some of the culverts there? I noticed you said on the south side of Third Street. Some of those culverts uh, don't even have a culvert. I'll say, I mean, there's no drainage at all.
Right, and you know, we'll just have to get time to get in there and see what's what.
Don't we have some uh, didn't we purchase?
Yeah, we purchased, though, it's just a matter of having the time to get in there and do it.
Yeah, yeah.
With the sewer and stuff coming in.
Okay.
You got a question for me or Linda, or Kent?
Uh, we uh.
Yeah, turn your mic on, and then it'll be Mr. Richardson.
We uh, we purchased a, a, a vac, didn't we?
Yeah.
Could we utilize that where that, we have those low? And yeah, we have, uh, in areas, uh, we had one on Horseshoe Bend that was stopped up. And we blew it out.
Well, I mean, as, as far as in the ditches, uh, where we have like the low gas lines and stuff, can we utilize that, that ba-? I mean, I know it'd be time consuming, but.
Yeah, but if you take any of that material off the top of that and then exposing that gas line or whatever, then they're gonna blame us for something happening.
Yeah.
So I'd rather not.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
I was just gonna say, like, the gentleman that's, the gentleman that came up here in July, I think they were more not asking us to do anything with the berms, but they're kind, just wanna see what we're doing with the uh, front and the drainage along the road. That's kind of their concern so far as the city goes.
Yes, sir.
Right, and like I say, if y'all were, on your way home, just look over that way, you'll see what I'm talking about. All right.
Okay, thank you, all right. Any other questions or talk, discussion on that? If not, we'll move right along, I guess. All right, number five, RV park zoning district council to discuss and consider regulations relating to land use and design uh, criteria for the RV park, including the possible addition of the RV park zoning district to the code of ordinance. You, you want him to say something, you wanna go ahead and start?
Well, I'm the one who asked to start discussion on this. The reason being is we've had several, over the past couple of years, RV parks wanting to come into our area, which is great. I mean, the RV parks are very popular. But from talking to Kent, he said that when these folks uh, come and want to apply it, there's really no guidelines that him or the staff can give them or go by. And that we really needed to come up with some guidelines. Now, it says on here zoning district, I, I'm not proposing a zoning district. I don't think we need to do that, we're not big enough for that. Um, but there, I think it would be good for us to start discussing some possible guidelines. And I found this ordinance for Ferris, Texas, that had a lot of good guidelines. I know a lot of them, you know, they may not apply to what we want here, but it, I, it's just a, a place to start talking about it and deciding, like, say, like, I live on Eagle Drive and there's a big field behind me. I wouldn't want an RV park coming in behind me right there off the highway because of the noise and all the... So I really don't, wouldn't like an RV park being near a residential area. It need, like, the one that is um, asking to come in now, out by Green Family Camp, that's a great spot. You know, there's not a lot of houses out there, it's not gonna cause any kind of problems. It's not a heavily uh, residential area. The one that wants to come in by accent, uh, is right there off the highway, not a lot of houses, they're next to that truck stop. That's a, I think that's a great place, for one, I think they'd do a great business. But we need some kind of, of guidelines for um, you know, what we want, what we don't want. Uh, safety issues, health issues, uh, electrical, the, how the electrical's done, how the sewage is done. Um, just those kinds of issues. And as far as the RV park that we currently have, that would be grandfathered in. This, any ordinance wouldn't affect them at all. They've been here a long time, many years, they've been great, done a great job. You know, there's no need to, for it to affect them. But new RV parks coming in, you know, what, what would we like to see happen? And uh, to keep things safe and healthy and not upset our, our citizens by moving one in, letting one come in. Another one uh, right off Brown, that they wanted to put in right off Brown, the residents didn't like that idea. Because you're talking about big RVs coming in, they run generators, they have lighting, you know, twenty-four seven. So I just wanted to start a discussion on what you guys think would be some good guidelines for an RV, for RV parks that are coming in. Not a RV district, I don't think, I don't think that's something we need.
Just for new RV parks wanting to come into our city limits?
Yeah, yeah, how close do we want them to residential areas? You know, uh, that kind of thing. And what kind of safety things, the, the electrical? I know in Belton, they had an RV park, the electrical wires were not high enough above the RVs. So when the wind or the, the sun, it got real hot, the wires touched the RVs and a couple of them caught on fire. And so we don't want that going on, so we need to have some kind of guideline to go by. So when they build it, they make sure um, that they're at least three or four feet above that RV. That way, if the wind blows or the sun makes the wire sag, it's not gonna be a fire hazard. Things like that.
Yeah.
That, that we just need to have. So Kent will have something or their staff will have something they can hand to them and say, this is the guidelines we have for RV parks here at Bruce Fletti.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say furthermore on that, let's push them in that general business, light industrial, heavy industrial category. Because RV parks aren't defined specifically in our zoning ordinance, that's where we think they should be. So my bare minimum recommendation is that let's go ahead and at least define a RV park and let's get the land use classification into our ordinances. That way, we know which categories they can go into by right. If y'all wanna do additional on top of that, you know, you certainly can, but that would be my bare minimum recommendation for changes.
Okay, Mr. McGurk?
Okay, just two things. Uh, one is I think that a zoning deal probably would be a, a good move. So if you're gonna take and say there's an RV park, that's not a temporary move. They're gonna go put in utilities and things like this. And there are standards that are set for building an RV park that are, are safety standards. Um, the other thing is, is when we, when we do this, I, what, one of the things I did do when I read the proposal, it's a good proposal, okay? It's from another city, which means that the language in here will conflict with some of our ordinances. So we'll bring those, that language to where we keep the language that we already have in our ordinances and put that in this, so we don't create a conflict of ordinances. So those are the two things. A zoning area probably would be a better move.
Okay, Mr. Richardson?
I agree, I agree with kind of what Kent was saying, bare minimum, we just, I mean, me personally, I think we should zone, they should be zoned. Like, they're not a residential, there's not a neighborhood sort of, it's a business. So I think bare minimum, we put that, put that as a zoning issue to cut, put them in the live business category. And my other, my other thought, does anybody up here have a problem with how the current RV park is set up or run or any issues with that?
The only, the only thing I know about, you know, uh, if they do come into our city limits, they're gonna have to pay to have sewer hooked up.
Yeah.
You know, they can't do that.
As far as the RV park there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wiggins, N C S M.
Yeah, I have a hand up, but you go ahead, you, you're already starting.
No, I didn't see your hands, sir.
Okay, I, I'm sorry.
I tried.
Uh, so anyway, as far as the RV park there, uh, when they were building our house, we lived there for the better part of the year. And so Nancy is a very conscientious RV park runner, uh, uh, operator.
Yeah.
Okay, and she does have ordinance, like you were, you had mentioned, like generators. You can't run a generator in her RV park. It's prohibited, okay? They provide power, and so they're not gonna let you turn a generator on, because it's not only irritating to us who live in town, but you, if you've got an RV that's right next to that generator, I'm gonna be a whole lot more irritated than you are. So um, there, she makes sure that the people that come in there meet a, a standard which is compatible with the city, so.
I guess my only, I'm sorry, I just gotta finish the thought. I mean, nobody really has any issues with how that is. I think we should kinda make sure whatever we decide here would be, I kinda use that as almost a model, if, if that makes sense. Like, make sure we're not making something that that wouldn't even hold up to, if that makes sense? Since we all like agree that that's pretty well ran, kinda use that as kind of a model with whatever we decide on this, is, was my one point.
Mr. Wiggins?
You're up. Maybe, oh, there you go. Well, I do think we probably, we need some guidelines. If we're gonna have RV, RV parks, we, we need some guidelines for them. And uh, but I would like to, because this is, a lot doesn't apply to us, like you're talking about, Graham. I, my thought initially is, let's get a committee, you know, get a couple of council members and, and, you know, sit down and hash this out and bring back something that applies to Bruce Fletti. And, and uh, then we kinda go, go from there. That's kind of my initial thought. Because I, I do believe, and I'm sure that the, of the RV parks, in addition to an ordinance, you know, that just outlines what the RV park has to do. But they probably have guidelines, like you're talking about, a, a, about the generator and stuff. You know, they've got rules and regulations that uh, you have to abide by. But we do need, I do believe we need something, you know, in place.
Uh, it just, um, the RV park we have now, I, there's never really been any issues with and, and you said you lived there and they did great. That doesn't guarantee that the next RV park will have as good a management. And so we need to have something that gives the guidelines that, okay, this is good management here. Because not everybody's gonna be the same. And so there needs to be some kind of guidelines, and the committee idea, I think, is good. Put heads together and, and come up with something that fits us.
Uh, uh, just got one thing, show it to me. Uh, on committee, getting a committee together, if it's only two council members, I think every council member should be able to write what they want down, what they think an RV park, maybe do some research, check it out at RV parks. And that way, they can do their own, and that way, it's not up to just two people in that committee. You know, it's up to the whole council. And that's usually how we do things anyway, is through, you know, the whole council and stuff like that. I mean, you know, but it, as I said, it's up to the, it's up to the uh, council, you know, how they wanna do that. Yes, sir.
Okay, so what my recommendation would be is you get a couple of council members on a committee. But I'd also like to invite uh, at least one or two people from the community. I'd really like to see if we didn't reach out to like Nancy.
The RV park.
Okay?
Yes.
She's, she's running an RV park and she knows the problems that they experience. She knows how to maintain a, a good, safe and quiet place. And, and she might come up with some really good ideas as to how long do you allow RV parks to have an RV in their park? Okay, do you have short term, long term RV uh, spots, things like this? And so I think that if we, if we put a committee like that, I'd like to invite Nancy to come and do that.
I think that's a good idea. And doing the committee, then like you, Mr. McGurk, you've lived in one, so you know what you expect from it. And Joyce brought it to the table, so to me, that would be the two council members, that's just my thought. Uh, Mr. Richardson?
That was actually exactly what I was, one of the things I was holding out hand.
Oh, okay.
But uh, even if she doesn't wanna be on the committee, at least reach out to her and be like, hey, this is, kinda once the committee gets their ideas, reach out and sit down with her and just be like, hey, what thoughts do you have?
sit down with her and just be like, hey, what thoughts do you have? I just kind of wanted to clarify, I wasn't saying because we have an RV park that works great, that the next one's going to be. I've worked at the, I was on patrol almost eight years at the county. I have seen the good, bad, and the ugly of what those can turn into. But I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't trying to make that argument.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yeah, yeah, I'd think it'd be good for the commi, put a committee together and, and I don't have no problem with. I think Graham and, and Joyce would be good on it. Or somebody else, I don't want to be. But, uh, yeah.
He says I'm all in nothing.
No, no, I don't, I don't want to be. But, you know, again, RV park shouldn't go next to residential houses. You know, I, I agree with that. And somebody, I ran into a gentleman at the post office just two days ago. And he was asking me about RV parks. And that's one thing he was saying that, you know, whatever. They do not need to go where residential sectioned are, you know. And they'd be out, kind of like the one we have over there. Or like the one that, uh, might be coming.
To the station.
Yeah, south of the Accent Center.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's out there in the middle of nowhere. It's not right near residential section. So, I think that'd be good. Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question for Kent.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, you probably know this, this Kent. So, if we could like, you're talking about putting RV parks in the, uh, lot, the business ordinance or zoning. Could we include an inclusion, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head where our zoning, like where residential may touch business. But would it be possible under the law to put in, put a park in our business zoning, say, if it's an RV park, it can't be part of the zone of touching a residential area?
You could change the setbacks for that. Now, we do have a screening barrier. If a commercial or general business district abuts a residential district and there's an incompatible land use, which I would consider this to be the case, then there has to be a screening wall. But that doesn't prevent some of the other issues that y'all have been discussing up here, like noise. You know, that's, that's not going to prohibit that. From, based on the discussion here, it sounds like maybe the, the route y'all do want to go is to create that zoning district. And then, once you have that authority to specify which, which parcels within the city limits can have an RV park, that would give you a little bit more control over where those are allowed to go and, and verify that they're going to be away from residential areas.
I'd like to see, uh, somebody from the E D C on that committee also, so that we're not stepping on some toes.
Economic to do all that?
Yeah.
So, um, I'll go ahead and just mark up a, a committee, I guess make up, and I'll send that out. And if y'all just let me know if y'all have any issues with that. Otherwise, we can bring this back at a future council meeting. They could.
Sounds good. All right, um, okay, this one looks like, uh, all right.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Thank y'all. It is five forty-six and the workshop is now closed.
A regular city council meeting. Meetings are available to watch on our YouTube channel. Search for the City of Bruceville, Eddy and click the subscribe button. Please mute your phones and computers to avoid any interference during this meeting. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate each and every one of you. We'd like to see people out there because this is the only way you really get to know what's going on in the city. Because sometimes YouTube is not, people will listen to it but they can't quite hear everything specifically. It's just kind of here and there. So, because I watched it the other day and I thought, "What did he say?" You know, but anyway. All right, if y'all would please stand for prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather tonight in gratitude for the men and women who serve our city with courage and decisions and dedication. We lift up our military, our police officers and our first responders and even the city workers whose labors often unseen for the good of our community. Grant them strength in the face of adversity, wisdom in movements and decision and a peace, and peace in the midst of chaos. We shield them from harm, guide their hands and hearts and let them return safely to their families each day. Bless our leaders here tonight with this concernment and unity. May every decision made be rooted in justice, compassion and a deep commitment to the people they serve. Let the city be in a place of safety, respect and hope for all who call it home. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Y'all may have a seat, please. Thank you. All right, back in the back, we have Jamie Rodriguez. She is in charge of our water department. And we have Pam Combs. She is our city secretary. We have Chief Michael Dorsey. We have Jean Sprout in charge of our water department. And we have Officer Personnel.
Close.
Close. I'm getting better.
We're getting there.
Okay, doing better. And then we have Johnny Tabor and Chris from Tabor's Associates. And, okay. And then up here to my left, I have Councilman Wiggins. Councilman McLaughlin. McGruer. City Administrator Kent Manton. To my right, I have Councilwoman McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Yes. And Councilman Richard Prater and Councilman Justice Richardson. Justice Richardson. It's that, he gave me a Red Bull to drink before we started. It's his fault. All right. All right. Community announcements. Does anybody have any community announcements?
Cherie McGruer, 915 Old Moody Road. I have two. September 5th, first Friday bingo at the United Methodist Church. Come out and have a great time. We've got some great prizes. And our mocktail of the month is a cider float. We had them last year. They were very popular, so we're bringing them back. Also, it's short notice for some people, but we're going to have a Harvest Festival, Hometown Harvest Festival meeting tomorrow night at the Family Life Center at 6:30. I'm looking for volunteers. So if there's anybody in the community that wants to participate in this festival, all the money we raise goes to the local charities. Please come to that meeting at 6:30 or just reach out to contact me and let me know you're interested. Okay?
Okay, anybody else have any announcements, out citizens or anything? Okay, Kent?
Yes ma'am, just got a couple more for you. Labor Day, September the 1st. That's coming up this next week. City offices will be closed. We're going to enjoy a day off with our families. And then second down here, we've also got Trash Roll Off Collection Day. That's going to be September the 13th at the Public Works Facility, 8 to 12 p.m. And that is weather dependent. So, check the city website for any updates. We'll blast that all on Savvy Citizen if something changes. Regular city council meeting is scheduled for September 25th at 6 p.m. We might be throwing in an additional one some point in September. That's still TBD at this point. And then the candidate forum for the November 5th election is currently being planned, but that is also to be determined.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody have any announcements? Okay, Mr. Prater.
Bruceville Community Church has a food bank and they have two elderly ladies that are operating it. And things are getting heavy. They're looking for volunteers. It's the second and fourth Wednesday of every month from, I think it's 10 to 2. So if anybody would like to get ahold of Harmon Turner at the senior citizens, so you could surely use some help.
Okay, thank you sir. It's a good thing it's going for the citizens. Anybody else? Okay, all right. All right, and of course I will say that all the churches are open on Sunday. They don't close on Sunday morning. So, just want to let y'all know. Just thought I'd throw that in there. All right. Number three, citizens' presentation. The city council welcomes public comments at this point on items not specifically listed on the agenda. Speakers must sign up before the meeting begins. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. The council cannot respond to matters not listed on the agenda until a future meeting. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Okay, moving right along. Number four, drainage and flood migration efforts. Council to discuss, consider and possibly take action on solutions to migrate flooding issues, especially those along Third Street and FM 107. Kent, you want to do that again?
No ma'am, not unless you want me to.
No. All right, does anybody want to discuss anything? Does anybody have any questions? We discussed it in our workshop, so does anybody, is a citizen have anything they want to say about the floodings or stuff? Yes, sir.
Rick Edmiston, my question is, if TechDOT has 107, that's their, why don't they take care of the drainage through there?
That's a good question. We did talk a little bit about that on the workshop. It is a bit of a confusing agreement that we have between TechDOT and the city.
Yeah, they do anything to get out of work.
We do have multiple requests for TechDOT maintenance in the right of Way of Third Street. We haven't heard back on that.
We are working on them though.
And we're working on an updated agreement as well. That will better explain whose responsibilities are what.
All right, so do I have a motion then on this?
Well, I was just, I was just going to suggest, I mean, we pretty covered this pretty thoroughly in workshop. I don't see reason to go into any more depth now unless somebody disagrees.
Motion, that's the first time. Anybody have a second on that? You're going to second, moving on?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of moving on? Thank y'all very much. Okay, number five, sewer change order request. Sky Blue Utilities. Council to discuss, consider and possibly to take action on change orders request for sewer customers connection and septic discommissioning submitted by Sky Blue Utilities LLC. Okay? Yeah, we are going to go into executive session for this, so let me read this little part right here. Okay, BRCT LLC doing business as Blackrock Construction. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consolidation with city attorney and sections 1.05 Texas disciplinary rules. Doing business as Blackrock Construction. And it...
And Sky Blue.
And Sky Blue. So, and Sky Blue. So it is now 6:09 and our regular council meeting is closed. And it is 6:10 in our executive session. We're going to the back.
It is now six thirty six and our regular session is back in order here. So we're going to hear to the, we got that.
Getting a motion on.
Yeah, we're going to be taking a motion on the items that was in executive session. I'm looking for it here. Okay, got it. Okay, do we have Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the demobilization slash mobilization change order request with Sky Blue Utilities in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Prater seconded that. All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, now we're going to staff report. Now we're going to skip it on.
No.
Number five? Okay, all right, we're going back to number five. Sewer change order request, Sky Blue Utilities, counsel to discuss, consider, and probably take action on change order request for sewer customers connection and septic decommissioning submitted by Sky Blue Utilities LLC.
Mayor, council, so on this one here, the RV park here in Eddy, when Sky Blue went out to install their customer service connection, you know, in this project, we accounted for one septic, one service connection per address. And so when they went out there to start potholing and determine how much footage where the septic tank was located, they discovered not one but five separate septic tanks out there. So you've got a change order request before you tonight for forty five thousand dollars. That would add a connection to each one of those septics plus the decommissioning on that one. Really what we're asking for you tonight is not approval of that, but essentially the policy clarification. Do you want to support this business and pay for that out of our loan and grant funding? Or would you like to just continue with the tradition of treating each entity with just one service connection, i.e. they would have to pay for the additional services themselves?
Well, I think if we did approve doing this for the RV park, it would cause a lot of problems with the school. Because they're asking the same thing. And if we've said no to the school, then we need to be consistent and treat everyone the same and say no to the RV park.
Mr. Wiggins?
I totally agree. I believe we just need to stick with the one, you know, connection for them, and that's all.
So Johnny, would you mind speaking a little bit to this? If council wishes to essentially deny this change order, would we direct Sky Blue to maybe connect the biggest septic tank out there? And leave the other four and the connections up to the property owner to handle? Or would there be a different strategy?
Well, there could be a couple of different strategies, but I think the big point here is this is what we're doing right now with your sewer system is just the very first part. You're going to continue to have this situation as the sewer system spreads out to areas that we're currently not serving with this part of the project, but they're going to be served at some point. And that is, no matter where it goes, I think if you establish a procedure that for residential services, you will do that, do that in some way. But for commercial businesses, just like the school, I might recommend you do that because I think it creates some, I mean, if you do it for one, you're going to have to do it for all of them. So if the next one comes up is one that has eight septic tanks or they're spread out all over forty acres, then you're going to end up with that same issue. And as we all know, you can put a septic tank anywhere that the county allows you to, and it can be ten foot from another building or it can be three hundred foot from another building. And so that's where the commercial part becomes difficult. And if you can get a policy, whatever you choose to do, would be something that you will have to do for everybody. And you've already kind of begun that with your position with the school. And there are multiple septic tanks in OSSF they have scattered all over their campus. So.
And I will clarify my previous statement too. The school district is not having any septic tanks decommissioned as a part of the loan and grant. So they're getting, they're getting one, I think it's a six inch tap connection. And of course, we've let them know that we could potentially work with them on some additional taps. But that cost completely falls on them. So I just wanted you to be aware of that as you consider the fact that we're hooking up one business connection, one septic decommission with the RV park. And then also for full transparency, we have had at least one change order for a residential address so far that has had two septics. And so you'll have, you'll have signed off on that. Now, we've already discovered at least one other address with multiple, but we're addressing that in a different fashion. So. Just so you have the full bit of information.
Mr. McRae? I'm actually one of the people that says you've got to be careful what domino you knock over. And so if, you know, and I would support the RV, except for if you open that door, you're going to, you're going to end up, we know that the school, as soon as they got wind of that, they're going to, they're going to be standing on our doors.
It is now six thirty-six and our regular session is back in, in order here. So we're going to hear to the, we got that.
Motion on.
Yeah, we're gonna be taking a motion on the items that was in executive session. I'm looking for it here. Okay, got it. Okay, do we have Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the demobilization slash mobilization change order request with Sky Blue Utility in an amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Prater second that. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, now we're going to staff report. Now we're gonna skip it on?
No.
Number five? Okay, all right, we're going back to number five. Sewer change order request, Sky Blue Utilities, counsel to discuss, consider, and probably take action on change order requests for sewer customers' connection and septic decommissioning submitted by Sky Blue Utilities LLC.
Mayor, council, so on this one here, the RV park here in Eddy, when Sky Blue went out to install their customer service connection, you know, in this project, we accounted for one septic, one service connection per address. And so when they went out there to start potholing and determining how much footage where the, where the septic tank was located, they discovered not one, but five separate septic tanks out there. So you've got a change order request before you tonight for forty-five thousand dollars. That would add a connection to each one of those septics, plus the decommissioning on that one. Really what we're asking for you tonight is not approval of that, but essentially the, the policy clarification. Do you want to support this business and pay for that out of our, our loan and grant funding? Or would you like to just continue with the tradition of treating each entity with just one service connection? I.e. they would have to pay for the additional services themselves.
All right, Mr. Wiggins.
Well, I think if we did approve doing this for the RV park, it would cause a lot of problems with the school. Because they're asking the same thing. And if we've said no to the school, then we need to be consistent and treat everyone the same and say no to the RV park.
Mr. Wiggins?
I totally agree. That, I believe we just need to stick with the one, you know, connection for them, and that's all.
So Johnny, would you mind speaking a little bit to this? If council wishes to essentially deny this change order, would we direct Sky Blue to maybe connect the, the biggest septic tank out there? And leave the other four and the connections up to the property owner to handle? Or would there be a different strategy?
Well, there, there could be a couple of different strategies, but I think the, the big point here is this is, what we're doing right now with your sewer system is just the very first part. You're gonna continue to have this situation as the sewer system spreads out to areas that we're currently not serving with this part of the project, but they're gonna be served at some point. And that is, no matter where it goes, I think if you establish a procedure that for residential services, you will do that, do that in some way. But for commercial businesses, just like the school, I might recommend you do that, because I think it creates some, I mean, if you do it for one, you're gonna have to do it for all of them. So if the next one comes up is one that has eight septic tanks, or they're spread out all over forty acres, then you're gonna end up with that same issue. And, and as we all know, you can put a septic tank anywhere that the state, that the county allows you to, and it can be ten foot from another building, or it can be three hundred foot from another building. And so that's where the commercial part becomes difficult. And if you can get a policy, whatever you choose to do would be something that you will have to do for everybody. And you've already kind of begun that with your position with the school. And there are multiple septic tanks in OSSF they have scattered all over their campus. So that's.
And I will clarify my previous statement to, the, yeah, the school district is not having any septic tanks decommissioned as a part of the loan and grant. So they're getting, they're getting one, I think it's a six inch.
Tap.
Tap connection. And of course, we've, we've let them know that we could potentially work with them on some additional taps, but that cost completely falls on them. So I just wanted you to be aware of that as you consider the fact that we're, we're hooking up one business connection, one septic decommission with the RV park. And then also for full transparency, we have had at least one change order for a residential address so far that has had two septics. And so you'll have, you'll have signed off on that. Now, we've already discovered at least one other address with multiple, but we're addressing that in a different fashion, so. Just so you have the full bit of information.
Mr. McGurk?
I'm actually one of the people that, that says you've gotta be careful what domino you knock over. And so if, you know, and I, I would support the RV, except for if you open that door, you're gonna, you're gonna end up, we, we know that the school, as soon as they got wind of that, they're gonna, they're gonna be standing on our doorstep. And that's the next domino. And then you start saying how many dominos were actually set up. So we're gonna end up footing the bill on more than one, and the school's gonna be a huge expense. So I think that we need to be very careful what door we open.
Mr. Richardson?
I just have a quick question. So if we, if we decide to just hook up the one septic tank, the biggest, is under our ordinances and under how, how we're requiring people to connect to the sewer, are we going to be forcing that business to connect to the other four tanks?
That is correct.
Okay, are, are, I have, I have one quick question. I didn't ask this, and I should have asked it earlier. Are the other four tanks being used?
I believe so.
You believe so? Okay, so they are being used for the trailers there? Okay, 'cause he didn't put down there that he had that many, and I just wondered if, how many was actually being used?
I have one other thought about this. The city is assuming some liability on private property right now, because you're, you're putting a sewer line, a service line on the private property, and you're tying it into a septic tank and you're decommissioning that. So the question becomes, if you tie on to one for insta, or you make service available, and there's multiple tanks out there, and you start running all across the property with more pipes, then that's more pipes that I would envision that the city would be liable for. So the other part of that is the city has to take bids, and did take bids for the work, so there's a unit price for laying the pipe. But if the landowner, whether it's a school, or whether it's a private, a commercial business, if they wanna tie on to their service line and extend it off and pick up others, get a plumber to come in and do it of their own selection, then you don't have any liability for that. They're simply tying on, which is what historically has always been done in the sewer system.
So just, just so I'm clear on that, so, I'm sorry.
Oh, he is, oh, that's.
I saw a question from Mr. Tabor while he's still up, if that's okay, Mr. Wiggins?
No, it wasn't Wiggins.
So like, so we could connect to the main, to the big one, and then the RV park, we would require them to connect, but if they wanted to, they could run lines from their other septic to that at their own cost, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and the lines that they run won't be by this contractor necessarily. It'll be by a plumber that they select that come in, comes in and works on their, whoever they work, that works on their system, and to get them to decommission those tanks.
Just to clarify.
We, we would recommend that Black Rock install a tap on the sewer main, because it's still under warranty. Black Rock makes that tap, and after that, it can be a private plumber after that.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, and, and I think it's already been answered, is, is, he has, they have four septic tanks, or five, yeah, five septic tanks. But they have five septic tanks because of the volume feeding those septic, they only handle so much, and then you gotta have another septic tank in order to be able to meet their needs. And I know they have quite a few RV positions out there. And so my concern would be then, if you're going to bring them in there, you're gonna decommission the major septic tank, are they gonna be able to hook into that line coming in? 'Cause now they don't have a concern over, I'm gonna overload my septic tank, 'cause I have too many RVs feeding it. Do I make myself clear with that?
That's why it would be recommended it would be a six inch tap on the RV spot that Black Rock would install, and that would, that would allow all the septic tanks to have enough flow for all of those.
Okay, all right.
Okay, you have something?
No, I think, I think I clear positive.
Okay, Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, I, I mean, I, I think we still need to limit it to one, and I'll make a motion right now that we limit the RV park here on Frontage, I thirty-five North Frontage Road, to only one tank.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we have a question from the audience.
My question is, is did that business give the city any concessions towards the sewer coming in and using portions of her property for that, or for the disposal site, or whatever you're gonna call it? 'Cause I know back when we were staying with her, she was saying something like that, like, I gave them permission to use my property for the sewer when it comes in. And if that's true, then maybe she should be granted some concessions. So that's just a question.
That's a great point. Do you, do you all remember that one? Johnny, I'm pretty sure that is an easement back there, right? Okay.
It is an easement, and the city secured that easement in the course of preparing for this project. But we met with them and talked to them about that, and said, we can run this line back here where everything that's on your property will run to it by gravity. Or if you don't wanna give us one, we're gonna rewrite it up on the interstate. It'll be uphill from everything that you have, and everything that you have will have to get in there with a grinder pump. So there was a way to do this where we didn't go back there, and they selected to do it where they could feed, serve all of their facilities by gravity.
That was the land that they gave, okay, all right, all right. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second to limit it to one hookup, one septic tank, one sewer, and with a six inch tap for that, right? Six inch tap. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, thank guys, thank y'all very much for everything tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to the staff report. Right? Counsel to discuss and consider staff report from the city administrator, chief of police, city attorney, consulting engineers, and department heads. Okay, can't?
Do you wanna see if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, y'all have any, any questions at all for any one of these departments?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wiggins?
For the police department.
For the police department? Okay, chief?
Okay, for the police department, only. Chief, one is, what's, what's the status of, of the RVs over on Melissa Street? It looks to me like only one citation was issued for July, and why only one?
Yes, sir.
There have been additional citations issued.
In July?
In August.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So you'll see them in this coming month's report.
Are we just giving one citation a month? Is that what we're doing?
No, sir.
Okay.
Not, not necessarily. 'Cause I, I'd gone out there, I've been out there a couple of times, but, 'cause I went out there initially, and then I did some follow-up, and then I issued citations when I went out there initially, and then I did some follow-up, and then when I went back out there again, there were still outstanding violations, so then additional citations were given for those outstanding violations. And then I waited until the property owner went to the prosecutor's conference on August fourteenth. And so there was, we have a new prosecutor now for the, the city. And so they met on the fourteenth, and so as far as I understand, the case has been reset, and there's some stuff pending with that. So I'm just waiting for some things to get resolved in, in the court to see what the outcome of that's gonna be before moving forward with anything else.
Okay, one other thing, on the, your city ordinance enforcement report, what is it? You got dangerous building, what is, and you got nine out there, what is a dangerous building? Explain that.
It's pretty much any structure that's dilapidated or in need of repair. So there's some that are new cases that have been issued, that, that accounts for cases that are new, that have been issued NOVs, notice of violations, and that also includes cases that were still currently working, that have been addressed, that are still in progress, that are still considered a dangerous building, but they're working towards compliance. So they're still on the list.
Okay, well, on another note, I noticed in our finances, and I talked with Esther too about this, but we have a revenue section of the general fund for the SRO being payment from the school. While I was looking at that, you know, we had projected about forty-five thousand is what we'd receive. To date, we've only received twenty-seven. And so I was asking her about that, 'cause we only receive that quarterly. And, you know, we're gonna fall short on that. And I'm concerned about that, 'cause that's part of our total revenue, so that adds up. Do we have a SRO officer?
We don't have one full-time currently, right now, serving full-time.
Right, do we have one at the school, though?
Not full-time, sir.
But so we don't, school started, and we don't even have an SRO officer up there at all?
Not full-time.
Not full-time, but.
What does that mean, not full-time? Does that mean we have one every day, or this?
They're shorthanded.
No, I mean, I, I understand they're shorthanded, but we also have an agreement with them. I thought that, is my understanding that somebody was gonna fill in.
Our agreement, my agreement with the school is currently, while we're trying to find someone to fill that position, either myself or whoever's on duty is filling in. And we're, you know, if the school needs something, we're taking care of it, they'll call us. And then we're also, throughout the day, we're going up there checking on the school and doing what we need to do.
Well, this, the thing that's been happening, especially, you know, as y'all know on the news, and in a church school, you know, I hate to see our school up here kids without an officer up there, you know. By the time we, something happened, time we respond and get somebody up there, it, it could be catastrophic, yeah.
And chief, did you wanna mention that we did just get approval to bump up that pay a little bit?
Right, I think, so, one of the, the things I brought to Mr. Kilgore's attention was, I think, part of the problem why we're having a hard time retaining people and also finding people to fill that position is due to the most recent pay increase for the patrol officer from the code enforcement position. The school, the, the pay for the school resource officer wasn't included in that, that most recent pay increase. And so before the school year, or right at the start of this school year, I went to Mr. Kilgore, and I, you know, informed him of that recent pay increase, and asked him if we could bump up the school resource officer pay to, to mirror, you know, what we're paying the rest of our officers, and he, he approved that and said to go ahead and do that. So I've adjusted the, the job posting to reflect that, that pay increase, and the, the school has approved that. So that, we did that in hopes to, to fill that position sooner.
Okay, oh, okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Richardson, you have a question?
Okay, Mr. Prater, you go first then.
Was there an incident just happened that y'all posted up, at, at the school?
The school posted a.
Can you, can you speak to that?
Sure. So yesterday evening, about six forty-five PM, we were notified through Texas, or through DPS, they have a program called the iWatch program. And so it's a reporting system for, for threats. Someone reported a school-based threat through the iWatch program that's through DPS. So when someone makes a report through the iWatch program, it has to go through their reporting system. I think it goes to San Antonio first, is what I was told, and then it gets to, you know, has to get channeled through and disseminated to, to the right place. So it takes a little while for that to, to get from point A to point B. But basically, someone made a, a report about a threat, that a student had made a threat, basically to bring a gun to school. And so we got that information about six forty-five PM. As soon as we were notified of, of that, that threat, we began an investigation into that threat. We went out to the student's house, we interviewed him, talked to the parents. I immediately began making phone calls with the school administration to notify them that, of what our findings were and everything like that. And then I also followed up with them today as well to get, you know, all the statements and everything from, from this, from any potential witness, student, teacher, you know, whoever may have heard anything regarding the threat. But anyways, we did, through our investigation, from talking with the student that made the, the threat and everything like that, we did find that the, the threat was credible. And so being the child was, you know, it's a juvenile and everything like that, we, we did have to, and it wasn't, you know, it was, it wasn't in progress, so we had to get a warrant, a directive to apprehend for a juvenile. But we did take immediate action on it. From the time we got the call till the time we got, we went ahead and got a warrant drafted, presented it to a judge last night. So from the time we got the call till the time we got a warrant signed and got him picked up, it was roughly about three hours.
Awesome.
So we jumped on it, we got it handled, it was isolated incident. But we were able to, you know, go from the start of the investigation to making an arrest in roughly about three hours. And so we went, after we got the warrant, we went out to the, the house where the juvenile lives. We took him into custody, took him to the Bill O. Juvenile Justice Center. He was charged with terroristic threat. And so he'll be dealt with accordingly on that through the, you know, juvenile justice system, and then also through school discipline. I know that they're gonna expel him, or suspend him for X amount of days, and then put him in alternative school for however long that they're required to do so. But we just wanted to act on it quickly, so that way, you know, there was no, you know, question in anyone's mind that, you know, that school, that student was gonna be allowed to go back to school, and that way, that threat was completely taken out of the picture.
Thank you, sir.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, do you have a question?
I got a couple, well, I got several questions. So far as this SRO, so was there, I wasn't sure, is there an officer actually when school is in session? Is there an officer over there every day, students are there?
Well, since, I mean, so right now, since we don't have someone assigned full-time to that position, we're basically filling in, so either myself or whoever's on duty throughout the day, we're filling in and going over there.
So you already have walkthrough, is not actually having an officer stationed?
We don't have anyone assigned over there throughout, for the whole school day.
Okay, that's my question. Okay, so you, you talked about SRO pay raises. We bumped, wasn't it December that we bumped the officer salaries up with the code enforcement?
Yes, sir, but for the SRO, that was just for the summer months.
Yes, but, so you said you just went to, went to superintendent Kilgore at the start of this year?
Yes, sir.
Why the delay? And get those salaries like equivalent?
I didn't understand that question.
Okay, so you, you knew, you knew the salaries were disproportionate in December, but you waited until the school year to start trying to get that evened out? And you said the, so what is this SRO salary now compared to your officers? You said it's nearer, or what numbers are we talking about?
I'm sorry?
You said the SRO salary is nearer to what your officers on patrol are making? How near are we at this point?
It's the same now, sir.
Oh, it's the same, okay. All right, that's all I have for the school.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the delay, I mean, we didn't have, I went, I thought, you know, I didn't bother them during the summer, and so since I didn't have anyone to fill that spot full-time, I just, you know, waited till the very start of this year to see if that was something we could, we could accomplish. I mean, yeah, I probably waited, I could've done it sooner, but I just went at the. We took him into custody, took him to the Bill Oak Juvenile Justice Center. Uh he was charged with terroristic threat. Um and so he'll be dealt with accordingly on that through the, you know, juvenile justice system and then also through school discipline. I know that they're gonna uh eh uh expel him or suspend him for X amount of days and then put him in alternative school for however long that they're required to do so. But um we just wanted to act on it quickly, so that way, you know, there was no, you know, question in anyone's mind that, you know, that school, that student was gonna be allowed to go back to school, and that way that threat was completely taken out of the picture.
Thank you, sir.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, do you have a question?
I got a couple, well, I got several questions. So far as this SRO, uh so was there, I wasn't sure, is there an officer actually when school is in session? Is there an officer over there every day, students are there?
Well, since, I mean, so right now, since we don't have someone assigned full-time to that position, we're basically filling in, so either myself or whoever's on duty throughout the day, we're filling in and going over there.
So you already have walkthroughs, not actually having an officer stationed?
We don't have anyone assigned over there throughout, for the whole school day.
Okay, that's my question. Okay, so you, you talked about SRO pay raises. We bumped, wasn't it December that we bumped the uh officer salaries up with the code enforcement?
Yes, sir, but for the SRO, that was just for the summer months.
Yes, but, so as you said, you just went to, went to uh superintendent Kilgore at the start of this year?
Yes, sir.
Why the delay in getting those salaries like equivalent?
I didn't understand that question.
Okay, so you, you knew, you knew the salaries were disproportionate in December, but you waited until the school year to start trying to get that evened out? Okay, never mind.
Oh, wow.
And you, you said the, uh, so what is this SRO salary now compared to your officers? You said it's nearer, or what, what numbers are we talking about?
I'm sorry?
You said the SRO salary is nearer to what your officers on patrol are making? How near are we at this point?
It's the same now, sir.
Oh, it's the same, okay. All right, that's all I have for the school.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the delay, I mean, we didn't have, I went, I thought, you know, I didn't bother them during the summer, and so since I didn't have anyone to fill that spot full-time, I just, you know, waited till the very start of this year to see if that was something we could, we could accomplish. I mean, yeah, probably waited, I could have done it sooner, but I just went at the start of this year to ask them if we could do it.
And that position was filled up until the summertime.
In the summertime, it was not, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions about the code enforcement.
Okay.
How are we doing code enforcement? I mean, I've talked to some people and they're kind of a little bit confused. Are we doing that like on a complaint base, like somebody calls in and you go out there? Or is it kind of as you patrol, you see there's tall grass over there and kind of initiate that process?
It's both.
Both, okay. And what is, so we've issued the Melissa, Mr. Wiggins would ask about the Melissa Street address. How many rounds of citation, like when do we, you start enforcement action with that? Was it in May or June, or do you remember?
It was sometime in that timeframe, sir.
Sometime in that timeframe, okay. I guess, I, I guess, I'm asking that to kind of understand this. I'm looking at the uh one seventeen Evergreen Street. They were issued two citation for high grass weeds, and then two thirty Hungry Hill was issued two rounds of citation. Whereas that, whereas the other, the, the other similar citations were just one in the July month period. So what's the kind of the difference in the two?
It's just, uh, what do you mean, sir?
Well, I'm just, it seems like we're kind of like, looking at this list and looking at the previous list, it seems like we're kind of, some of these violations were citation, we're kind of issuing them once a month, it seems, from looking at the data here. Except I see three exceptions here that got two for the same citation in the, in the month of July. God, I'm just kind of trying to understand what the difference between the different addresses are.
Okay, we might have to dig into that a little bit more and get back to you on that.
Did they take care of the issue and that's why they only got one citation? Because they had taken care of the issue?
It's possible. I mean, every, every case is, is different. I mean, everything's handled kind of case by case, so.
So have we got any compliance out of Melissa address at all, any of the citations you've issued?
I mean, I know work is, some, some compliance has been done, but there's still things that are non-compliant.
Okay, and have you been allowed back on the property?
I haven't asked, but the last time I was over there, I, I wasn't.
Okay, that's all I have.
Excuse me.
Uh on the property on Melissa, do you know how many people are living there in those RVs?
Three. Two and one, I believe, two people and one and one and another.
Are they all male?
I think it's two males and one female.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just didn't know if I was getting the right information.
And what, uh, I was under the understanding that, what is that, is it our DA? Prosecutor, our prosecutor uh talked with uh the owner that was over there and had told him that they put it on hold for a little bit until he could get, he, the prosecutor himself wants to go out there and do a walkthrough with the owner. And so that's why it was put on hold a little bit, the prosecutor done that.
Okay.
But, but still, it's a violation to be, for them to be living in that uh RV within the city. I mean, that's violation itself there. I don't know, there might, probably sounds like there's some more violations there, but that, that itself is, I, you know, we're gonna go, go see if he's living in it.
Yeah, well, I, I do know they're working on building, they're getting the, the pier and beam thing ready to start building. And I know they're standing that to do that, that's what I've been told, but I haven't been over there to look at it.
Have they received a permit?
Uh, right, that's my question.
That, a, a building permit, they had, and before they put up a wall or a post, they're gonna have to.
But they're working on pier and beam.
Well, they're, they're doing the, they got some concrete things, center blocks, center blocks put out there. I mean, I haven't been there, I just, this is what I heard.
Did they get a permit plan?
No.
Not for building, okay.
Well, and don't they have to have a permit to live in the trailers while the house is being built?
They don't, it's, it's not a specific permit, it's a, it's a request of the city administrator and/or the mayor for up to six months. And then after that fact, they have to get city council's approval.
Have they done that?
No.
Okay.
Would they, if they was gonna do that, if they was gonna build something there and with intent, I mean, gonna live in their uh RV with intent of building uh a house, then they would have done that at the beginning, you know, especially this individual, this individual was a code enforcer.
Yeah, well.
Not like it doesn't know.
I'm not speaking up for him, but I know when he was code enforcer, we had a gentleman that let him and his family live in a travel trailer for a long time, building, getting his home redone, and he never asked us to give him the, to, to let him do that. He just done it. I mean, the, not the code enforcer, but the person just lived in it.
Well, that's the code enforcer's fault for not enforcing the code.
I don't know, and, and we, we probably didn't know about that this time. But you know, when we know about something, it's one thing not to know about it, but it's another thing, when you know about it, now, now we know, now we need to do something.
I agree.
Yeah. That's all, Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Chief. All right. Anybody else want to pull anything out of that part? All right. Okay, so now, oh, he said pull out the water?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know, because you got Ken, I guess Ken is gonna go through some of his. Okay, okay. So I have some in the water and then the engineers. Okay. On the water, I just wanna, and I try to do this because some people uh like these figures. So we reported one million and eighty-one thousand gallons more than last month that we pumped, and we flushed two hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred gallons more than last month. We used seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred gallons more than last month. Our water loss was a hundred and four thousand four hundred gallons more than last month, and had eight more fixed leaks than last month. Our loss percentage is point eighty-eight percent less than last month. And we sold about fifty-one percent of the water that we pumped. That's all.
So no question, you just read me?
No, yeah, I just putting these facts together, because I, you know, in order to get them, you have to take last month's report,
Yes, sir.
this month's report and see the differences, yeah, do the math.
Okay. Anything else need to be pulled out?
Uh that MRB report. Let me see here, uh which, you know, we had, but talking about the new water well, and this changed in their report, so maybe some of the people out there and the people that's listening don't look at this and maybe this will help them. But uh that pre-application submitted for the, under the new water well, the pre-application submitted for the SRF funding was ranked two hundred and fifty, fifty-nine out of three hundred and fifty-five applicants. Only the top thirty-eight have been selected for funding. MRB will continue looking for funding options for this project as, as it is much needed to ensure water capacity is available in the forward top pressure planes. So that was with the TWB DB. Uh and then on the, on the Old Bethany Water Main Improvements, uh they state that they spoke with the contractor August the twenty-first, and he stated they anticipate starting this job within the next couple of weeks. We'll push harder for them to get started on this project. They have kept pushing it back due to drill rigs not being available. So they had never started that project, the Old Bethany Water Main Improvement yet. And that, and that was, that was all, the only changes I really seen significant in that part. And that's, that's all I can't really do here.
Yes, Mr. Richardson?
So I'm looking on the agenda, this is the approval, approval of the stuff for the July twenty-fourth meeting and the August fourth. Will the August eighteenth and this one be at the next meeting?
Okay, you repeat that, please, sir.
So, okay, so I'm looking at the consent agenda right here, council to discuss, consider blah blah blah. The minutes from July twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, regular council meeting, and workshop and August fourth, twenty twenty-five, special council meeting. There was a meeting after that of the eighteenth, correct?
Correct, those minutes just haven't been finalized, they'll be on the next regular agenda.
That was my question.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, uh number seven, oh, oh, yeah, city administration's gotta talk.
Yes, just a couple of updates here for you. First and foremost, we have some job openings, not sure if you're familiar with that. Of course, we do have a couple at the police department. One patrol officer um has recently been taken up by a, a cadet sponsorship, but we do have that SRO position. We've also got our city secretary posting live as well as a court clerk posting live. To date, we've received over fifteen applicants for the city secretary position. Interviews started taking place this week. Our desire is to get the top two, three candidates before city council at some point over the next month or so. Uh court clerk position, the interviews for that position probably won't start for another month or so.
Do we have any applications for that?
Yes, we do, we have three applicants to date. On the sewer system, um we talked a little bit about this earlier tonight, but uh I wanted to just mention that Anna Hobbs' work, we are planning for that to start here soon. Again, I've got to get another coordination meeting with all our various contractors before we start letting citizens know that we're gonna be tackling that aspect of the project. For all of you who have been following this, we did request additional funding from uh the congressional appropriations process. We were, we were informed that we did not um get selected to move forward with that. So we will not be able to install additional phases onto the sewer system at this time. That, that's what that funding was being sought after for. Uh Black Rock Construction, they are now in the process of preparing all the necessary information for the railroad bores. So there's a, quite a bit of involvement that goes in, into that. Uh the railroad requires flaggers, they require active monitors out there anytime something's going underneath the railroad. And so we're finalizing all the, the paperwork for that. That's one of the last significant milestones on this sewer project. And then on this next one here, just wanted to bring everybody back up to date. We've been considering a water rate increase for about a year or so now. We've, we've started the process of doing a rate analysis. That will need to be revised a little bit, but one of the biggest factors on this that we knew was gonna be coming was uh Bluebonnet is gonna be extending and expanding a line to Spring Valley Water Supply Corporation. And when they do that, they're gonna trigger a, a loan and interest payment with that. And so we knew that the rate was gonna be going up about fifty cents, if I remember correctly, Gene. This is, this is probably gonna be happening in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So we're gonna have to start shoring up the additional costs that we're gonna have to pass along to our customers at a minimum. You want to speak a little bit more to that one?
Yeah, so they're projecting uh breaking ground around February twenty twenty-six. So when they start breaking ground, that's when the loans and stuff will start going into effect. The increase is possibly in the spring of twenty twenty-six is when that rate increase is gonna affect everybody. So, you know, I brought it to Ken's attention again, and, you know, we need to start doing something now so it don't bite us in the long run, you know. So it's coming, I, you know, we don't know exactly when, but the other entities that are in Bluebonnet, are in Bluebonnet, have already started implementing rate increases a little at a time. Now, if we don't do anything now, then we'll have to just do it all at once, you know, and then we're gonna be the bad guys again. Yeah.
Is that, uh, did, did you say, maybe I missed it, about the water rate? What, how much are gonna go up, what's it gonna, is it fifty cents?
It's roughly fifty cents a thousand.
Fifty cents a thousand, okay.
And right now, we pay, what is it, uh, three fifty a thousand right now, so it's gonna go to four dollars a thousand.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And just as a reminder, the last time we went up on the water rates um was in early twenty twenty-three is when that ordinance took effect.
And I think most of that was a rate increase then too from Bluebonnet.
Yeah.
I cannot remember that one.
I think some of that was rate increase in Bluebonnet then too.
Yeah, it was.
What do we say the average household used a month? What was that when we were doing sewer?
For the water, per L U E? Um Gene, do you remember that off the top of your head? No, I don't have that figure at the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Okay, moving on a little bit more, uh so Friendly Oaks Well, um we, we had to shut this off recently to ensure that the, the unit did not overheat. Inside the box, this, this thing was reaching upwards of a hundred degrees Celsius. The, the max recommendation on this one is not to go over a hundred and twelve degrees Celsius, I believe is what it was, or a hundred and twenty-two. It was, it was one of those numbers, there was a two in there somewhere. So anyways, we, we shut it down out of an abundance of caution. However, once we went to start this thing back up, the sine wave filter capacitor uh went and, went and fried on us. So the well itself is down, it's, it's offline, but the motor is still good. We have had it tested by Alliance Electrical Group, we're still good on that. We do need to have this capacitor um replaced. Now, where we're at on that project, this thing was a bit rigged be, the way it was installed because it was missing a bracket. We had been requesting this bracket over the last year or so, it never came in. So we're following up with that now, and apparently the gentleman who helped us coordinate everything to install is no longer with the company. Um so that's why we, our service ticket wasn't taken care of. So we're gonna get the, the bracket out there, we're gonna get some quotes on getting this thing replaced and get it back up and running. That's the idea on it.
And that's a safety, I go over the capacitor part and set the well pump.
Amen, amen.
That's correct, and if you'll remember, you probably won't, but in the McCrory engineering report that we had earlier in the year, he did mention to us that because we don't have any uh VFDs on the, on the outset of our um booster pump, I'm sorry, sine wave filters on the outside of our, our booster pump VFDs, some of that electricity was hitting that capacitor, and he said that you will see shortened lifespans on those capacitors as a result of it. Okay, and then lastly on here, WBW Eagle Prairie, we did have a kickoff meeting with them on August the seventh. We started off by clarifying some of the scope of the traffic impact analysis. We got a lot of that hashed out, however, there's been a lot of back and forth emails with their vendor for this to, to further define that scope. I haven't had a whole lot of time to commit to, to further answering some of their questions, but I hope to do that here in the next couple of days. They also submitted a water feasibility study. We're probably looking at about four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements that they would need just to get water to their site. We're gonna be discussing that with them, talk about some of the alternatives with, with our engineers as well. They have reduced things down from four hundred and two homes to about three hundred and ninety-five homes. So, and they, they wanted me to remind you that they're taking those away from the fifty-foot lots per their, per the planned development district. And then lastly, um apparently they weren't aware of a major water line that goes through the property. So Gene and the guys spent a lot of time this week getting out there and locating this funny line that goes across the property, does a couple elbows, at least one elbow over there, and so we got eyes on that. What we don't want is for some water line to end up under some houses at some point. So we have properly identified that, we just updated that on our GIS mapping system, and we've relayed all this information to WBW so they can incorporate it into their models. And that is all I have for you tonight, any questions?
Do we have any questions?
Start the report.
Okay, moving right along. Uh consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda will be considered by the city council and will be interacted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests. A, approval of minutes, B, financial for July of twenty twenty-five, C, engagement of twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five financial audit, single audit and annual compensated financial report, D, request of attended conference, E, extension of Union Pacific Crossing Agreement. Do we have anything that needs to be pulled out, Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
On both the finances?
Both finances? Or just the finance, the number B?
Finances, B.
Just B, all right. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Wiggins, if you want to talk here, you want to take, we, uh then we can do a motion on the rest of them, or should we go ahead and accept them as read? Okay, we're gonna, since nobody else wants to pull anything out, we're gonna go ahead and, and get a motion for um A, approval of minutes, C, D, and E. A, approval of minutes, C, D, and E, we're going to pull B out. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, Mr. McGurk, second, thank you, all in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. McLaughlin made a motion, and Mr. McGurk, I thought it was his second.
Whatever that motion was, I made it.
Yeah. Alright, okay, Mr. Wiggins, you want to discuss this one?
Okay, and, you know what, at one of our budget meetings, it was brought up about, about the city that they wanted City City put back some money, save some money, in other words. So, uh, and one of the things you can look at here, if you're looking at the finances, you, on this, under the general fund, you, you look on that Marla investment, you see there? And if you'll see, and this is year to date, so year to date, we've put in three hundred and fifty thousand, and we've taken out two hundred and fifty thousand. So, that's, that's unrestricted money there, that's like, where we, uh, when we get a little extra money, and I talked with Esther about this, and our check in, then they'll move it over there. So, you know, a hundred thousand to the good so far this year. Then on the water side, that, uh, City of Bruce Felletti, they call it the code water supply investment, again, that's a unrestricted fund, and year to date, we hadn't put in anything, hadn't, had put anything in that. But we've taken out four hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars from our investments. So, the point is that it takes a long time, the money that we have in reserve, the unrestricted money, it takes a long time to get that. We just don't get that over a five-year period or three-year, you know? As you can see, we're at the, pretty much at the end of our year, and on the city side, you know, right now, we're a hundred thousand in the good, on the water side, we're down. But now, we've done some improvement, a lot of improvements on the water side, so we had to use some money to do that. And that, and that's good, that's good, ain't nothing wrong with that. But, anyway, other than that, I mean, I just wanted to point that out, because I know that was important to some people at some of the budget meetings. And with that said, I don't see anything wrong with the finances, and I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the finances, seven, B.
Okay, I'd have a second, okay? All in favor? Thank you. Alright, uh... Number eight, regulation of cargo shipping containers. Council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action on cargo shipping containers that are being used as permanent accessory storage buildings. Review, interpret, and provide staff with directions of, oh, excuse me, on enforcement's approaches or possible changes to chapter three, article six of the City of Bruce Felletti Code of Ordinance.
Mayor, council, please let me know if you'd like me to go back into some of the background from our August the eighteenth meeting, otherwise, I can leave it up to y'all for discussion, if y'all got any ideas on how y'all'd like to approach everything?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to say that, you know, containers, they're stronger than any, any building that you can put out, those little tin buildings that people get approved on and putting in their yard. I just, I do think they need to make sure that they, if they do have them, that they look good. You know, they, they're not graffiti over, you know, make them look good, because you can make those look like a nice building, you know? And I don't see anything wrong with having that, because that's going to last a lot longer. I think if a tornado was coming, I'd rather go in one of those and try to hide in my bathroom, you know? Because it's just taking, container and all, you know? But anyway, that's just my personal opinion, I have no vote in this unless there's a tie. So, Mr. Wiggins has got his hand up, so we'll go with Mr. Wiggins.
We, we have a lot, you know, we talked about this, and actually took some action at the last meeting about it. But, uh, anyway, there's, we have these all over the city, if you ever drive around, you're going to see a lot of them. You know, I don't have nothing against somebody trying to put a container out there and, and for storage, because then, they won't have to pay storage, it'll save them money, actually. But, and I don't have nothing against them putting lights, wanting lights, running electricity to it where they can put lights in it, where they can see in there, that's a safety issue. So, I don't, you know, I don't have really nothing against containers myself, you know?
Anybody else have anything on that?
It sounds like maybe we're wanting some, some ordinance changes, is the direction I'm getting here.
Yes.
Because the, the, the way it's currently written expressly outlaws this in residential areas.
We need to change some ordinance.
Got my understanding?
We need to change some ordinance.
I was just going to...
Okay, let, let Mr. Richardson, then I got you, Colton.
I was just going to say, I mean, just from looking at it, I have no problem with treating that the same as any like little portable storage building you buy and put in your backyard, I mean, I think things would be about the same, so far as ordinances go.
Okay, agreed, Colton? He's kind of got some verbal problems, so...
Hello, um, so really, my only issue with them is, uh, like my current neighbor, she has one of those to fill up stuff, because I think she was trying to get some stuff out of her house. But, when it comes to like emergency vehicles, could there be something written in to where it can't be next to the road? Like, so close to the road, because it's taking up all of her parking? And like, say if an ambulance tried to come to her house?
Like her driveway, it's, it's in her driveway?
Correct.
Yeah, we're saying backyard.
We're saying backyard.
Just like a...
I just didn't know if that was a part of the ordinance.
Just like a Morgan building, it's not supposed to be in your front yard.
Right.
Or on the side.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, uh, do we have, need a motion to bring this up to have the ordinance changed?
Not necessarily.
Just direction.
Yeah, I, I need a bit more direction from you, um, in order to craft that ordinance. So, what I'm hearing here is you don't, the council really doesn't have a problem with it being on, in residential areas. So, the, the modification I would bring is to remove that restriction so that now these units can be brought in.
In their backyard.
In the backyard, okay, and then, if we do that, are aesthetics a concern? Do we, do we want to have them painted? If so, is there a certain color that needs to be painted, like a neutral or something like that? Or is it just, hey, let's just remove our, our wording, if there's any wording left on the container?
There's any wording?
Yeah, probably in the wording, because most, most of the ones they get now, it's, it's all one color. You know, they, they have different, you know, different colors, and it's all a solid color. You know, so I, I don't know, help? You know, yes ma'am?
I have, well, and I know all these folks, I understand where y'all are coming from, but I don't want one by my house. I, 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 unless, unless, if they make it look like a shed or a storage building, then I'm okay with it. But, I don't want a big ugly train car anywhere near my house. And that's me personally. If they're going to run lights to it, they need to be required to do it legally, not, uh, do their own Romax and do their own, they need to have an electrician do it professionally, they need to have a permit to do that. They need to paint it or enclose it, um, because I don't want to look out my den window, or my back window, and see this big ugly box right next to my property line.
There is, there, uh, okay, I understand, let me give him...
Oh, go ahead, I'll let her first.
Okay, yes ma'am.
I was just wondering if somebody could read the current ordinance for us, so that we have a reference point as we go further with the discussion.
Council, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yeah.
I have to look it up, but it is very late.
But I'll go ahead and take Richardson, and you have a question, sir?
Yeah, I guess my question is, do we have any current ordinances so far as if we treat them like temporary storage buildings? If I want to buy a Morgan building, I had one in my yard, we tore it down because it's falling apart, but if I want to buy one, put one in, is there any sort of ordinances, I have to paint it, I can't, I mean, could I paint it pink polka dots if I wanted to? I mean, do we have anything on ordinance for temporary buildings?
Well, uh, it's...
For temporary buildings, or for permanent accessory storage buildings?
If it's going to be...
Oh, like one of the Morgan buildings or whatever, like, okay, sorry, permanent accessory storage building, I'm going to say.
Uh, a lot of, I mean, everybody's always talking about driving around the city and looking at things, but there is some storage buildings that you can drive down the streets, and you look at their storage building, and it hadn't been painted in years. You know, and it's dirty, it hasn't even been washed off. Uh, it may have, you know, a pier beam under it where, you know, animals can get under it and all that good stuff. So, to me, I'd rather see that kind of container in my backyard or somebody else's yard next to me than see a building that is not maintained, is, you know, the ones that are just, you know, they're old, they look, they, they're not maintained. They got them, but they don't maintain them, they just got them sitting out there. But anyway, that's just my personal opinion, it won't even buy you a cup of coffee, so, that's all I'm saying.
I guess my point would be...
Size, yes ma'am, yes sir.
I guess my point would be if there's nothing in there so far as those storage accessory buildings, so far as painting, I see no reason to start adding, let's paint this and not this sort of thing. If there's no rule size, what color I can paint my house, I don't see why there'd be rules.
If they can have storage buildings out there in their yard that needs painting, they have no right to tell other people how to paint their storage units. Yes, sir, did you find it?
Yes, ma'am, um, this ordinance will take about twenty minutes for me to read, if we go through the whole...
Yeah.
Okay.
Love you, Danielle, but I don't think anybody is going to, do you have something specific you want me to read? I don't mind doing that. Okay.
Ms. Pam?
I'll keep digging, I'll keep digging.
Is, is there anything in there about what I was talking about, where it can be placed next to the road?
So, uh, thi- this is a permanent accessory storage purpose, so our, our typical setbacks, um, in our zoning code, all would apply to this. Now, this, this ordinance is broken down to two categories, you got the permanent aspect, and then you've got the temporary storage container. I don't know what's going on at your neighbor's house, but it could be, is this like a pod situation?
Yeah, it's one of those pods.
So, there's different rules that do govern the temporary placement of it.
Did she have it before this, we ever talked about it?
If there's an issue, I would recommend reporting that to our police department and letting them investigate and kind of weighing this situation.
She could have had it for years, it may be grandfathered.
Well, no, no.
Oh, it's not, okay.
No, it's, it's recent, I don't know how many months, but we're kind of giving her the benefit of the doubt, because she's older, so...
Yeah, and, and maybe she's going to have it picked up and moved somewhere, since it's one of those little pods?
I don't know, I just, I don't like to push those questions, you know?
We'll have the chief ask it, since there is a complaint, we can have the chief ask.
Yeah, it's not, though.
Okay, chief?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, I looked, I looked into it, I sent out a letter, a notice of violation.
Oh, okay.
Because it is, uh, temporary storage.
Okay, alright.
Because for the pod, because it is a pod container, because normally, you'll get them delivered, you'll fill them up, then they'll come pick them up.
Uh huh.
It's not meant to stay there long term.
Oh, it's, it's open?
It has a roll-up door.
It has a roll-up door, okay.
Right, but the people that live there are elderly, and she had a family member pass away.
Thank her mom.
And they're going through stuff, and they're trying to put everything in that pod, and then they're going to have it picked up. She said it's nothing permanent, and she said that she was going to get, I think, picked up next, she said sometime next month.
Okay, good.
So, I was just trying to work with her and give her a little bit more time to get it.
Ms. Pam, you have a question?
You got a mic back there too, don't forget.
She's already up.
Y'all talked about doing a conditional use permit, y'all still want to go that route where someone can go out and look and see where they're going to sit it, and what they're going to sit it on, because the way I look at it, if they're going to sit on blocks, it's well off the ground, they should have underpinning around it, something to keep animals out from underneath it, yeah.
It needs a skirt.
Yeah, or if it's going to just sit on gravel, you know, you wouldn't have to do that. Plus, then you would know whether they're going to paint it, what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I, I still feel like they need to get an ass for a conditional use permit.
Yeah, uh, because we would need to get with Bureau Veritas, because they inspect all the storage buildings or accessory buildings. So, we need to probably get with them and talk to them about what they're going to inspect on them. So, that's going to be another thing too, that they would probably have to get inspected due to the fact that they take and make sure it's so many feet from the property line, so many feet from the house. And they have to do like a site plan, is basically what it is, is you have to show where your house is sitting, where that container is sitting, and that container cannot be within ten foot of another structure.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's another thing they need to take into consideration.
It's going to have the same requirements as somebody going to put in a storage building back there.
They would have to get them inspected.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
So, if they look like they're trash, I mean, you know, I bought one that doesn't look too good outside, but it looks good on the inside. That and the city, you might want them to paint it, because the outside has all this...
If it's not new, yes.
Yeah, it's not new, because you can get used ones that are all rusted and have something rot all over it, you may want them to paint it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what I think that a conditional use...
Yes, ma'am.
Permit ought, needs to have some guidelines of, if somebody's going to get one, what they should, um, what the city expects for them to do. Like, if you're going to get one, you need to paint it, city needs, you know, or make it look like it's not all rusted in it. Because, I mean, like she said, she don't want one by her house, but if somebody puts one by her house, it's all rusted and really bad, in the same way with any of y'all, it'd be kind of like an eyesore. So, I mean, you know, I think there needs to be some guidance.
And most storage buildings are very, those kind of containers are very expensive.
Yeah, because they're, I got, the cheapest one was thirty-six hundred, and that's what I paid for mine.
Yeah, and you, you can get them little blowaway buildings a lot less, yes, sir?
I understand it, look, I... It kills me that I'm going to have something in my backyard, and it kills me that if, if, if you have a storage room in your backyard, and I don't like the color of it, do I need to come here and talk to council and get you to change the color of that? I'm just saying.
Talking about the color.
We are talking about color, we're, we're, generally, it's, it's...
No, I'm not talking about color, they just need to paint it to where it looks decent. They can paint it purple if they want to, they can paint whatever color they want to paint it. But it just needs to look decent in their yard.
And whose mind? If I put one in my backyard and it's the color of rust, not saying it's rust, I'm saying it's red iron, I like red iron. Just because you don't like red iron, your, your rights end at my property line, especially my backyard. I can understand the front yard, but y'all's rights end at my property line. If I want a rusted color building in my backyard, that's my right. That's not y'all's right to say that I can't have it. It's not, we're, I'm, I'm tired of stepping on people's rights, because you don't like the color of something. That has nothing to do with nothing. If I want, if I want a rust-colored building that's metal that ain't going to rot off like wood, and I can lock up, and nobody's going to be able to cut a hole in the side of it and steal my stuff, I should be able to have it. And if it's rust color, so be it.
Not rusted, but rusted.
Yeah, if it's rust color, the color shouldn't matter, that's my building, you have nothing, you didn't pay no money to put it back here, you didn't pay no money to buy it. So, your rights have nothing to do with what's in my backyard, period. And I think it's time that we stop stepping on people's rights to own what they want to own, period.
Okay, um, I think what we're talking here, not as a color, but if it's a, a, a building that's there, that's rusted, not, that it looks rusty, in other words, like you say, the red, red iron and stuff like that. But if it's a building that's deteriorated, we don't let deteriorated buildings stand in ours, but you have a certain obligation to the community. And so, I'm saying that what we need, or anything like that, that's going to be on the container... And so, I'm saying that what we need, or anything like that, that's gonna be on the container, I'm saying that it needs to be in good repair, okay, so we're not having buildings falling apart around us.
I'm not hearing all that, so, y- y'all want it painted, the people here want it painted. So what if I go paint it with the clear coat? Then so be it, it's painted, but it's the same color as what it was when I put it in my backyard.
Okay, uh, I think we're kind of getting a little off, off of the, the board here. And what, what, what we're talking about, what I understand that we're talking about is that I don't think we should tell people that they cannot have a storage building like that put in their backyard. What we're saying is, they need to get a conditional use permit, and our conditional use permit's gonna have laws and is gonna have, you know, things to s- to say about it, if it's a, if they're bringing one in here that has got holes in it and it's rusted and stuff like that, then we're gonna say, you have to fix it up. If you already have one in your backyard, and it starts falling down around your ears, then you may, people may have to go get it fixed. But normally, those kind of buildings, we're not saying they have to be painted, cause most of them are new when they come in, so, when they buy them. You know, some of them are used, but they're still in great shape, they're a solid color, and there's nothing wrong with them, I think that's what we're trying to get. But if they are, like I said, with graffiti, or something written on it, or something like that, you know, then, you know, railroad or whatever, it's got written on it, it needs to be covered, that's all we're saying, just something like that. Okay, Mr. Wiggins had his hand up.
Okay. Whatever we do. Paint, no paint, I, I'm okay with them, but we don't need to put some type of restrict- this'll be for anybody new that's coming in and wanting to put one, for the people that already have one, I'll be clear.
Their grandfather.
We're not gonna, I don't wanna give, well, you got a hundred and eighty days to move it or paint it or anything, no. Anybody that has one, it's on their grandfather's.
Their grandfather's, yes sir.
Now, anyone that new is gonna bring one in, now, because maybe someone's had one here for thirty years and it's been here, and maybe it's blue and orange, I don't know, I don't care. But, but we're not gonna say, no.
Oh, you need to paint that one color, I mean, don't, no restriction on, and as far as underpinning, is ours underpinned over there? No, it's set on the gra- it's set on the ground, yes, it's set on the ground, and is any holes there where something might can go under? On, on, normally on them, they're set on the ground, but on each end, it's, it's above the ground a little bit. Yes, not, on the sides, no, but on the ends, yes, it sits above the ground a little bit.
On skips.
Especially where your door is.
So what I'm hearing here is that maybe the conditional use process is probably gonna be the best, cause it's gonna be very challenging for staff to get a ordinance revision, and then to, you know, say, three years down the road, we've got new staff rolling in, and we're not sure, you know, which unit just came in, which unit's been there for a certain amount of time.
They have to get a con- just like getting a storage building from these little places, they have to get a conditional use permit.
I don't believe it's conditional use. To bring in Morgan buildings, it's not a conditional use, it's just a permit.
Permit.
It's just a permit.
Yes, just a, right, we're just talking.
We're not, it's, it doesn't need, it doesn't need a conditional use permit.
Oh, okay. Oh, I, I thought they had to, I thought they were conditional.
No, it's, it's just a permit to bring in a, like a Morgan.
Okay, my mistake, I thought they were.
I thought we're talking about storage containers.
Yes, we are.
Yes, okay, we're not talking about a little metal, eight by ten metal building that somebody gonna put out there, put their lawn mower in rakes. Yeah, we're talking about storage containers there, yes, that's right.
They're quite large.
That's right, uh, well.
I have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't think, I think we need to leave the ones that are here alone, you know, if you've got a storage container, that's good, fine.
Yes ma'am, okay, Ms. Pam, you had your hand up, and then it'll go to Ms. Danielle.
Okay, the ones that are here, that are in the front yard, they need to move them to the back, cause that's what we're having problems with because they see someone else, because you can't even have a storage building in the front yard. They see someone else doing that, then they think that they should be able to do it, these people moved those storage containers when they weren't legal to be put in the city limits. So if they're wanting to continue having them, and yes, their grandfather, they need to move them in the backyard. There's two of them that's.
Do we have some in the front yard?
Yes, there's side yard to the front, they need to be moved to the back, because they are under, don't you have a, something on it, a benton? Yes, they've got a citation because it's in the front yard.
Okay.
And side yard, it's considered front yard with Bureau Veritas.
Right, right, well, if they have a citation, then that one means that it can't be in there after that, so it needs to be.
Yes, they need to be, so, going forward, everybody needs to go to the back, not the front.
Like our storage.
But to clarify, this ordinance is still on freeze until we get determination from council on how you wanna proceed forward. And this discussion alone tonight is not enough to guide staff moving forward, we need some changes.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Um, I was just wondering about clarification on visibility from the street, is that already covered, or is that something that still needs to be covered?
What do you mean visibility from the street, because if you don't have a privacy fence up, then I can look in your backyard and see it, are you saying that if you see it, that that's not good?
Correct, that's what I'm, I'm asking, if, if you could provide, as council, clarification on if, if people don't have privacy fences, if you move it to the backyard, um, what is kind of the direction you're gonna give staff for that? Because that makes a big difference as to the quality of the containers as well, cause if you have a privacy fence around it, then quality and appearance and things like that perhaps don't matter nearly as much. But if you don't have a privacy fence and it's visible from the street, then those things do matter because that will affect property values and things like that, because of the look of your neighborhood.
Yeah, well, uh, we can't, we can't do that just for a container, but you can tell them that they gotta put the privacy fence up.
No. I think you certainly could if you desire to, if council desired to, you could put stipulations.
That's too many worms, yes sir.
So, I think there's, we kind of got off track on the idea of painting a container versus the container being in good condition. I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the permit process, we're not gonna let somebody move a junk Morgan building on there this fall apart.
No, we are not.
It's like we wouldn't let somebody mo- move a junk container this fall apart, correct?
No, we are not.
Okay, going on to my second point kind of here, why don't we just make them, classify them as accessory storage buildings? I got the ordinance pulled up, and I would just like to summarize it just kind of briefly. One, for, number one, and I'm just, I'm not gonna read every word, you have to have a permit issued by the city. Number two, electricity's not required, but may be added, need a permit to add it. Shall meet setback requirements of the under- underlying zone.
Mm-hmm.
No accessory building may be placed in a location that causes hazardous conditions, consists, can constitute a threat to public safety or condition creating condition detrimental to the surrounding land use and development. And they must conform to minimum exterior standards for the city, and no accessory storage building may be used as living quarters.
That's true.
Why, I mean, to me, that's the answer, but that's just my opinion.
No, that's, you're very right.
Okay, alright, so.
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
I mean, we can take a motion and vote on it.
Yeah, we can vote, here we go.
I, I do have one question.
Okay.
Ms. Pam?
Uh, if we get a conditional permit, if they have to have a conditional permit to put in the storage, uh, train.
That means, that means even on the other buildings, they'll have to have the same thing, so that's gotta be changed on everything, on all storage.
Well, you, you could word it where you didn't have to do that, um, do the neighbors get contacted under a conditional per- uh, permit?
A conditional use permit for our zoning ordinance, yes, this would be working a little bit outside of our zoning ordinance. So if you do the conditional use permit process, you could stipulate that just like the zoning ordinance, you also want neighbors to be contacted a part of the process, but this is, we're talking about a, a full ordinance change to get this done.
Okay.
Well, that way you'd know if the neighbors were okay with having a big box put in ten feet from their property line.
Alright, alright, so, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion, I make a motion that we vote to classify the storage containers as temporary, I mean, I'm sorry, accessory storage building by our ordinance three point zero six point zero zero three.
I'll second.
And Rich, Richard can second that, all in favor?
Oh, we, read that again?
Okay.
Basically, my motion is to classify these storage containers under our accessory storage building permit and those qualifications.
Uh, did you talk about these cargo containers?
Yeah, cargo, classify them as the accessory storage buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor? Unanimous, oh, all four, and all opposed, one opposed, it has passed.
Yeah, I do need a little bit more clarification on that one, so what you've essentially done is you've, you've struck the entire ordinance here completely out. And so, the cargo containers would be under accessory storage units, do you want to do that formally by ordinance? That's, that's traditionally how you would do this, so I would need to bring back a full ordinance before you, you would need to write, read out that ordinance number, and we would do that at that point.
Sounds good to me unless somebody has other ideas.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Alright, now we're going to.
Coming down the home stretch.
Okay, uh, it is now seven fifty-five, and our regular council meeting is, uh, closed, we're going back into executive sege- session for Sergeant Patrol Officer and School Resource Officer and City Administrator Administrators' Annual Performance Review. Okay? Okay?
Alright.